Good morning. All right, seeing the atomic clock on the wall is seven thirty one. Let's cut where the in-person work session of April fourth, twenty twenty-three of the Lord Sabbath touch report supervisors. Please join me in the pleasure of the. Brings us to our first agenda item. Mister Jones, good morning.
Good morning. Just an update on some project or street life replacement program. Apparently, the delay that we've been experiencing is due to a new lighting control vendor. That the program issues. So they're ironing out some details. I guess there were issues with supply chain with previous vendors, so they've sought out a new vendor. Supposedly, the, the, you know, a better vendor.
The, the, the.
It's all dependent on your perspective.
Do all the same equipment? Or is it?
It's the same type of equipment. Obviously, it's going to be a different brand, their brand versus the other, the previous brand. So there's work in for some agreement issues that we need to work out and then we'll get into their schedule, but I've been insured. Once we get the agreement signed. It's a thirty to ninety day installation timeframe, so.
Installation jumped up a couple of weeks. Wasn't it originally just supposed to be just set based things getting along?
Yeah, the actual duration of the installation is still going to be relatively short, be less than a week or so. But just getting to that.
Procurement.
They have all the equipment, all the materials are just kind of ironing out the, I guess, the, uh, the agreement side of things, so.
Great detail there. And there's other municipalities who are, we're not the only ones, we're not the.
No. Well, that's where we are with that. Uh, park cameras, um, we're all parked, the cameras are installed. Reed Park is partially completed. Hopefully, this week they'll finish the rest of the installation, the balance of the cameras. There, um. We're working with Metropolitan Fox Lane, they're installing utilities for a future proposed concession stand at Oliver Park. Uh, through their development, so working with them on additional conduit, additional junction boxes for the electricals. To facilitate the, uh, the electrical component of the park cameras at all the parks. Working through that and then also with Park Avenue Field, so hopefully, uh, some way the next month, we should have all the phones installed of those locations and just waiting for electric. Stormwater projects, we dug test bits for infiltration testing in community center for the proposed basin there. This is next to the scout cabin in the playground. The dirt gravel low volume road program. The Conservation District admitted to charity grants for this program. We have a couple of roads, we have one gravel road, obviously Roberts Road, but we also have some other roads that qualify as low volume. Uh, Cobra Road being one of those. We met with Conservation District to look at Cobra Road and this is obviously Cobra Road is from store to old forty foot road, um, from the crest of the hill to forty foot, it's an entrenched roadway. Uh, so there are drainage issues and there are, um, some concerns with the, the structure of the road as well, so this program would basically elevate the roadway, provides for some drainage improvements, a new culvert down at the, uh, uh, near our old forty foot road. So we've applied for a grant through the district for these improvements. Uh, total estimated projects about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And a little over two hundred and twenty-five thousand of that would be funded through the Conservation District. Nothing's been approved at this point and Conservation District was looking for projects because they have, they have a certain amount of money that they need to spend through the program. And with the limited number of low volume, especially the dirt gravel roads in Montgomery County, I think they have a little bit of a challenge trying to meet those obligations. So we're trying to.
We're here to help.
We're here to help and also to take their months. So we're working on that as well. Apartment activities. Done a lot of building and grounds improvements. Recently, now it's building property with all the beds and the mulching, uh, alumni hall, the, the YMCA daycare facility. Move some shrub, redo some improvements there just to make, clean up the, the site a little bit and make it more workable for the folks that occupy that building. Uh, park improvements, Reed Park, we're cleaning up the monument area that had become overgrown, shrub tree and just expansive mulch beds. And also the walkway leading up to the monument, monument areas kind of was in disrepair, so we've made some repairs to the paper walkway. Eliminated a lot of the shrub and the trees and just kind of cleaning it up and reducing the the size of it, just to make the indoor maintenance friendly. Uh, right part. The old rotted doors were just replaced last week. So they just need to be stayed at this point and we're also working on planting trees at Park Avenue and placing some of the dead ones here in County Village. Uh, trout stocking was a success. Uh, we had preschoolers involved and we also had a sixth grade class that was involved in helping his trout or helping us stock. The, uh, raw pond with, with trout, we did, uh, four hundred trout, they were they helped with two hundred in each session, so the, uh, our supplier was very good about working with them, getting a little presentation about what they do. Kids had a blast, all the, the teachers and then and everybody involved was very appreciative of, of our efforts and all my guys were involved and they really enjoyed it as well, so that was a, a good thing.
It was a really, really nice day, even though it rained.
Yeah, it was raining, but it was, everybody had fun, they were getting one anyway, so it didn't matter.
Thanks for that.
So, uh, yeah, our second stocking is this Thursday. Um, tree work Friday. This Friday, we're, Silver Road is going to be closed. Uh, to remove some dead trees along the roadway, we've got some trees that are dead or are concerned that need to be removed or within the right of way. Uh, on the agenda, we have two contracts. For your consideration, uh, at tomorrow night's meeting. Our base repair contract and repayment marketing's contracts, the bids are due at ten AM this morning. I'll have a recommendation for award. And lastly is the sale of our used equipment. Were you was a memo detailing what we had offered for the municipal online auction site? Seeing that the, uh, the bidding was, was pretty successful. Uh, those are for your consideration for tomorrow night as well for the approval of sale.
Did you get sold for the second time?
It did. I mean, not for as much as the first time, but I think that was just, uh, that was a blue. It's never just, uh, yeah, uh. Well, it was, it was a bidder that just didn't, he got caught up in the, uh, in the auction frenzy, I think.
Yeah.
And just, you know, overbid his means. I think that, that became a problem. So, yeah, so it was, it was bid for the original price was over fifty thousand dollars. And this time we got ninety-four hundred dollars.
We're not getting.
No, absolutely. And you start, you look at my spreadsheet on the second page there. And you look at what the original price is.
Yeah.
For a lot of this equipment. You know, for, for the, the John Deere farm tractor, we paid forty thousand dollars worth and the hybrid was over thirty-five thousand. So we've had that twenty for twenty-three years.
Of service.
Yeah, and less than five thousand. Different conditions. Yeah.
We need to have a good mechanic in.
We do. Right into my eyes and then see if it takes the same thing, there's no doubt about it, so. Yeah, and just with the, the used equipment part, it's crazy right now, so. We're taking full advantage.
You're gonna make sure the Michigan action does go this time?
Yeah, always going. We have that reserve of ten thousand dollars.
Right.
But then, then once it got to that point, we said, okay.
The guy will like be coming, pick it up.
Exactly. Freeze down the municipality, say, yeah, we're willing to let it go.
We'll send up.
Yeah, it's not worth keeping it around another six months and hopefully get a couple more thousand dollars. You know, for, uh, wind use. Uh, that's all that I have. We have any other questions?
Do we want to talk about the infill it works building now or later?
Uh, that's entirely up to you.
Up to you.
The gentleman. They're here, we're here, let's do it. Keeping with.
Yeah, come on, yeah, come on, yeah. Tony Ganguza and Ken Derholtz are from Boyle Construction Management.
Uh, I'll just introduce our, our company. Uh, I'm Ken Derholtz, uh, Vice President of Boyle Construction. Uh, we're a construction management company that's been in business since nineteen seventy-seven. Uh, we work on projects from a thousand dollars to, I think we have some forty million dollar projects. Uh, we have a department that, uh, performs construction management services, uh, in particular agency CM, uh, agency construction management, which basically services clients that are spending public monies in some fashion, uh, whether they're getting R cap funds or spending public dollars. And it's necessary to publicly, uh, bid the work. Uh, in particular, we, we pride ourselves and we have a process called Day One where from the time someone says I have a need or a napkin. I need this and we help, uh, gather a team uh, to vet the project and provide feasibility services, which I'll let Tony speak to in a bit. But then, uh, we can follow the project to fruition. Whether that's a groundbreaking or ribbon cutting or, uh, sometimes we just provide the feasibility study and, and the, the project marinates for a while, why, why either funding sources are being sought after or, uh, or maybe program changes. So, um, uh, I commend you for having us here. Uh, uh, most of the successful projects we've been involved with, uh, at a very early stage. You work on finding what your budget is and we call it a, a project budget, not, not just this is the building up, we're, we're talking, uh, uh, whether it's professional services, testing, uh, uh, land acquisition, um, uh, backend, uh, equipment, furniture, everything that's needed for, to, to occupy the, the building and, and complete it, so, uh, and, uh, and I think that's the, uh, I think we have a proposal in to the township to provide, uh, a feasibility study at the front end. Um, I, if you want to briefly go over what, what we're.
Yeah, sure.
Proposing or the services that we're proposing?
Well, Mike, um, I've been with Boyle for ten years now, Tony Ganguza. I handle all of our agency, uh, CM work, so uh, for the last ten years, I've probably done about thirty, forty projects really publicly related only. I mean, I'm, I'm very, very intimate with the process and uh, we did, as you'll see in our, our proposal, which I'm sure you've looked at, uh, we've worked at East Vincent, we were doing work in Hatfield and Warrington and a lot of municipalities down in Montgomery and Bucks County in particular, as it's turned out, so we've worked on administrative buildings. Again, public works, police, fire, all of them. Um, in this case, um, we've met with Doug and Joe a couple of times now and just, you know, talked through the project a little bit, it being a new public works facility. And it being a phased type project, meaning that Doug would contend, Doug and the crew would continue to operate the existing building while we built the new building. And we Boyle wouldn't be building the building, of course, right? We would manage, uh, we're really project managers more than I would say even construction managers, we manage the project from hiring the consultants. Budgeting, scheduling, bid preparation, putting in out the bid, contracts. Straight through to construction process, right? Bi-weekly meetings, holding the contractors accountable, preparing the contracts. Uh, reviewing payments of application, change orders, everything, we'd have someone on site handling the logistics and handling all of your vendors, furniture vendor, access control vendors, everything, we would coordinate the work from the time we got started with this feasibility study. Through the time that we were ready to cut the ribbon on the new building. Usually, uh, I'll call it a two-year process, usually a year for planning and a year for construction typically, typically. So in this feasibility study, which.
And just to clarify, uh, the, the township would probably hold most of these contracts, right, with the prime contractors and uh, stuff that Doug would be purchasing, but we would help just vet the contract and present it that it's an acceptable.
Most of them need to do the four prime and spit out, they'll act as our CM through that.
Correct, correct.
Contract that isn't get that far.
Everything.
Right now, all we're talking about is a feasibility analysis.
Correct.
What's this going to cost us? Does it make sense to do it where it's at?
Exactly.
How does that actually work so that we decide whether this is even? Doled.
Exactly. And, and that's a great first step. A lot of municipalities do this first step, like almost every one of our projects, this is involved. But what you're doing, I think is great, even better. You're doing the feasibility study standing on its own. And then once you have that document, you can then make decisions, right? You can make, and, and that's the purpose of this document. So we've hi- we've hired MKSC architects who we've, um, worked with a lot on these projects and a number of other architects, frankly, uh, with that, for that. So what did, um, it really goes to our project approach here, which is, you know, come down, do data collection. Understand the programming of the building, lay out the building. Uh, layout the building.
Yeah, he's reading off that one.
Yeah, I'm reading off this, off this page right here. Um, it's, it, it's a pretty straightforward process. We would actually, in this case, we've, and I've talked to CKS, your township engineer, to, to have their support on the project and get them to provide some engineering, very preliminary engineering work on the project so we can price it, right? We want to have a site that shows logistically how this is going to be built, roughly what, what the site layout is going to look like, so at the end, we're going to hand you a study. After we go through the programming, data collection and the conceptual design phase, we're going to hand you a study at the end that has layout, building programs, building laid out, site laid out. A budget based on all that that we would do and we would give to you that, as Ken said, list all the budget items. It's not going to just going to list the construction items, it's going to list all the soft cost items that we would see. So it should be a complete budget that you're looking at at the end, executive summary budget. Uh, we'll also put together a logistics plan so that you know how it's going to be built. And the timeframe at which it can be built, so I'll give you a, a schedule at the end that shows the whole pre-construction work from schematic design through design development through construction documents, bidding contracts, and then we'll hand you a construction schedule based on the plan that we have and let you know how long that's going to take. And again, in this case, it's going to be phased. So it may, you may look at it and say, well, it's taken a little longer than we anticipated and that's because it's occupied, it's an occupied site, right? So we'd be building the building. Doug moves in. Demolishing and then finishing the site work at the end. So it's, it's almost exactly how East Vincent did it on their site when we built the new administrative building, Public Works in Salt Shed. In this case, no administrative building, but very similar, they stayed on site, we built the buildings, they moved in, we demolished and then we came back and finished. So at the end, you're going to have a study that is going to tell you what can be built there, how long it'll take and how much it'll cost.
And that includes in your schedule, the timeframe to get MPDS permit, land development approvals.
Yes.
All those aspects of the project, well.
The whole pre-construction schedule will lay out the whole land development process and all the permitting required for.
It, it's usually from the day the board votes to the ribbon cutting, we try to present, but, but to your point, I mean, some of those durations are six and nine months, but those are on the and actually I think having CKS involved is, is really critical, not only for the pre-construction, but as Tony said. We have to phase that so that we meet all the permitting because we are going to be whatever, demolishing a third of the site and putting it back together and I, I think CKS and a construction firm should be talking about how that, how that works and operates.
Well, that's all part of the MPDS process, right? So we, we need that out of the gate. So I think getting CKS on board with us and MKS, the architects to work in this three to four month time periods really critical. And then at the end, you'll, you'll have a document that you can review and see if it's, if the project's worthy to move forward and. And we do, and we, and we can help you there too. We, we, we can certainly help you there. We have, you know, people that are um, that do R cap of, of funding and, and work our way through that process. So if the R cap fund, if that's one of the avenues. Um, if you do get that funding, we can certainly help with that. And our cost is in here, what we think it'll take three to, three to four months, but it'll depend on, you know, interaction with the board. Interaction with, you know, other stakeholders there might be, whether you include other people. Um, but I would suspect that the study itself is probably about three to four months.
So the fifteen thousand that's listed in here, the study, that doesn't include any cost CKS in charge.
Correct.
Okay. Do we all need sense of what?
Yeah, I think we do.
They sent us a proposal, I think they proposed with a little more detail than I think we need or this. Uh, right now, but we're going to have to go back to them and I mean, they had landscaping plans and all of the things I think are just
not, not necessary. We already have a base survey that we've paid for.
Correct.
So, you know, that was a big chunk of that.
Doug and I are going to go back to CKS and talk about what we, you know. They're, they're at a ground level kind of look at it, we're like this is probably a five thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, and we can work with, with with Joe and Doug to talk to CKS about what do we really need and what don't we need at this point?
I think they figure out the stormwater, but we can put a, a plug in for that without positioning inlets on the site and all that, so, yeah, yeah.
That, um, site is already previous.
Yeah.
Starting fresh.
Which is very helpful, very, very helpful. But, but we can, we can work with them to, 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 to bring that down.
Right, and just to go back to their, their proposal and, and their some of the projects they've done. They did the Neatland Township when I was there, uh, the Public Works and Municipal Building. If you look at the numbers, this was one of the things that really sold on them and it, and not necessarily Boyle, but you know, obviously they did a great job, just having a construction manager, somebody early on in the process, if you look at what the the budget they came up with was, the original budget was seven point seven one million. Uh, the bid came in at seven point one six seven and the percentage of change order was two point three percent, really low. Uh, you know, so even when we were done with change orders, we were still nearly four hundred thousand dollars under the original budget. But I thought was a pretty spectacular uh, situation because that hardly ever.
So, so we, I mean, I don't want to get too in the weeds, but, uh, that next level of services i- is working out bid packages, prime alternates. Uh, allowances for unforeseen conditions. And then a lot of times the alternates are planned out so that if you are under budget, you can add in the extra lifts or that extra two bays, uh, that's very common, so you you always want to land it on the deck of the carrier, but you want to leave yourself a little play and, and, and they, we call it these bid strategies. And, um, and then sometimes whatever, you might have a hundred thousand dollars in for unsuitable soils and it goes well. And, and we help you then spend it and a lot of times if you build it into the bid package, you can have that work, I won't say for free, but you don't have to pay for a change order, it's already agreed upon the price, so.
So you.
We had two.
You were going to say something.
At that point. A park project in town at the same time, twenty percent. So it was I'm gonna say, I'm seeing two things happen at the same time and they're handled in different ways and it was just good to have somebody who was watching the everyday details of the project. Again, whether it's Boyle or somebody else. You know, bridge, have somebody there.
Particularly projects of this magnitude, right? It's one thing when we're going to do a little quarter million dollar storm drainage project, but that's not a real one.
Right.
Yeah, I think, again, not to belabor the point, but if, if when you put these bid packages together, if you really narrow them down so the contractors know what they're bidding and it's in there. Change orders should be very, very minimal. That's the key, that in, after ten years of this, you learn a lot of what to do and what not to do and put in there, so, yeah, we, we make sure our bid packages are tight. I mean, really, really tight, so change orders should be very minimal.
I get you, Charlie. My, one of my big concerns is the phasing of it. Didn't just, uh, slightly demo and then rebuild, it's, it's a different animal. But with us occupying while one's being built and then the transition and then demoing, so that extends the timeframe of the project and looking at somebody, you know, what we were talking about, you know, with another vendor with, you know, managing the project from a building standpoint. Or kind of in my mind, that process falls down when you're dealing with the rest of the site. Once the building's up and it's occupied, then you still have that other whole aspect of the project that needs to be dealt with and managed. You know, to completion.
So we're going to need live utilities there. We need live utility in two locations.
Yeah.
And then you're going to, and then we're going to demo or cap the sewer water, but all that again, you would need a CKS at the table, but you need to think about that.
Absolutely, somebody needs to manage. Start.
These abilities, these abilities. Step at a time.
All right, so what's needed for perspective?
Well, we have one budgeted in here, so it's a professional service. So, I mean, you're, you give me your indication that you're, you want to go ahead with this and we can handle it from an administrative.
I don't think we can remove this project alone unless we have feasibility studies right up there, Doug, this is the way you'd like to see it. Based out. Hand, but.
I have a need for a series study. For a project in this influx and the, yes, I believe this is a good approach.
With, with the current, uh, senior center as well. That's.
We're going to do.
Feasibility.
Find out.
Yeah. We still would consider let them occupy as well or do those, is that something that we see or?
Well, ultimately, I don't think that there would, there would have to be some movement of the senior center to another facility at some point, I don't, I don't think that. A I mean, the, the, the current situation kind of happened organically, you know? And, uh, I don't know that anyone would say, oh, it's a great pairing to have a public works facility and a senior center in the same place, it really probably isn't. Uh, so it may be sort of that a- as time goes on and as we move this project along, we need to start talking to the senior center about where we can rela- relocate them. And, and probably to a facility that's probably better suited for that. Fact that that building's a little long in the tooth. Um, and a lot of issues with utilities, the, the A B X C system. But it's probably better facilities for them somewhere we could better get.
Community partners we can work with to try to hopefully centralize the facility for a few uses.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, frankly, we don't. Sustainability of the, of the senior center. Regardless of whether they're there or not, uh, you know, the, the number of folks there down considerably since since the pandemic and it has picked up some, but not anywhere near where they used to be.
Sixty to seventy percent of what they're, pre-pandemic. They're from.
Sense. Very good.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Appreciate you.
Anything else? For the good. All right, very good.
That way. Yes, sir. Uh, brief update on our parking camera project. Completion of phase one. Camp Wawa completed. Speed issue, vendor's not putting in panic. So I get better perception. Uh, Roth is done, uh, currently with a cellular solution. But there's a possibility of getting point, point wifi to work. And if the vendor can do that, then we're going to move that. Yeah, you know, every month they fill. And there's a couple of places that we think we can do that, so definitely happen at Roth. Uh, Reed, there are two cameras in now and two more to come. Uh, underneath it, a higher bucket. Uh, that's actually going to be one hole, but with two boxes. One elevated for the field, higher field, for the, uh, the entrance, believe, and we, uh, removed the tree and as trees get problematic, they will disappear. Think the night shift is taking care of them. So, but, uh, I think that's this week too. And Hackler is completed, uh, with cameras rolling. I initially booked it in phase one. But we were looking at the dog course for phase two. They have twenty-three cameras. Same vendor. They've been added. They've been added to our system. So we have those twenty-three, uh, done. So. Sorry.
So phase two is done. Which is.
Well, no, well.
Excuse me, if the golf club had a, the golf club was using the same vendor, we could solve it. It was crazy here. Is there a fee? Maybe they were paying a different fee. Is there a way to get that all package for that?
Well, I think ultimately we're paying for it anyway.
Right, yeah, I'm saying we're paying golf clubs paying X, we're paying Y, you know, we say, hey, let's put it together here since we have this many.
Well, there's no ongoing, no, that they have.
There's no ongoing car. Okay, perfect.
I mean, the only ongoing cut that we have is wireless connections that are, that. Yeah, your golf course is all connected via internet.
Wasn't sure how it's answered.
There's.
Oh, be here. Right, okay.
As Doug would say, that's kind of. All right, um, our new officer Frank Bailey started yesterday and he will be sworn in. Right? Reception for. Water control is scheduled in after the, uh, spring break.
Yeah.
Skateboards is necessary. See, because. The officers have been trained, it's a good, in twenty minutes, virtual training, have the, the process and will. See how it goes.
The buses I've seen all appear to have their cameras installed, so.
We have the three different buses. I think, Mike, it's one doesn't, so, God, Thursday's way.
Hopefully by next week.
Yeah.
We're good.
Thank you. All right, very good. Thank you, Chief. Mister Bukey.
Mister Chairman, uh, we had thirty-nine permits issued in the month of March. So at the end of April, we're going to see one thing for spring language is a official use application for change of use. Where a campus that will be up fire, um, truck repair is, is opposing to use the site. So you'll see that today as, uh, as an authorized prioritize.
That was the one we looked at.
What I think is going to.
Okay, we're gonna convert the champion to, uh, Doug.
Correct.
But we wasn't. Would have been a great.
No, no hearing board, uh, application break. And where your meetings more land development items include. With J M Fero, my nation, cleaning module, uh, three fifty-five, main avenue, owner in development and. Of the wildly three lot of the business there in Brennix.
It's just for everybody's knowledge, I'll disclose it again tomorrow night for the, um, three fifty-five Maple Avenue. Velocity Ventures Partners LLC, they have another entity that owns a piece of property in Hatfield. My company is buying a parking lot from them for a land development, completely separate distinct. We have no ongoing business and interest ranking, but. I was, I talked to the solicitor about it and he suggested I just make sure I disposed that as a tran- a transaction. Uh, and I said, when he did not think I need to refuse myself from the, the note. Just want to get that on the record, building in the morning.
Sounds good.
Oh, yeah.
That's it?
Unless you have questions.
If it doesn't.
Very good. Like, we received the, the plans to be a layout of the trail that, uh. The side. Or whatever.
Yeah, you see, I have things even in the back of the, uh, the. Break.
Oh, great career.
We'll have copies of, they, were they posted on, uh? Sheriff, she a point? Uh, trail? Trail map? Okay, I'll have to make sure that she doesn't get them on.
I know. She gave me the documents for the website, so I've got.
We'll have copies.
Okay.
Three separate things.
Excellent. Mister Jakowski.
Thank you, Chairman. The first item on the management report is a review of the meeting minutes for March first. And, uh, if anyone has any questions, concerns or changes, let us know.
Did, did the super authority get the planning module? Look at.
Uh, yeah, okay, yeah.
One, I missed, I missed one, was for the, uh, property three fifty-five pairs. Uh, H, um, it says that by the Shelley said he was fine with the trail of all the applicants would maintain the trail. I did ask if they would maintain the trail, but I said, I'd like to see it before I tell you if I'm a favor.
Would like to see.
I'd like you want the plans.
Uh, let's say.
That says the way they're. Okay.
Uh, next is the review of the agenda for tomorrow evening. Uh, under unfinished business, uh, Mister Jones discussed the, will be the authorization to award the contracts for the by two minutes pavement base repair. And for pavement markings, uh, under new business, uh, Louis J. Mascaro Planning Module. Ordinance twenty twenty-three oh two, adopt the I C N C International Fire Code, establish annual fire inspection program. Uh, resolution twenty-three twelve, permission of Pennsylvania safe digging month, this is the A one-one. Program. Resolution twenty-three thirteen, preliminary final development for Velocity Ventures, three fifty-five Maple Avenue. Resolution twenty-three fourteen, transfer of restaurant liquor license to Henning Supermarket. James and Susan Wiley, two oh nine Maple Avenue, three lot subdivision extension. Land development extension request. And then the authorization for the sale of used equipment as reviewed by Mister Jones earlier. And finally, a proclamation for National Library Week twenty twenty-three. Uh, next item on the manager's report is the, uh, discussion of the. I C C International Fire Code, uh, inspection program for the township. And we discussed this earlier this year, um, the township get a point, uh, Keystone Municipal Service has our fire, uh, inspecting, uh. Person for, uh, Lower South Township for twenty twenty-three, uh, they did put together this ordinance. This is based on the International Fire Code. Um. And if the board had any questions, they did also attach a resolution, uh, which outlined the fee schedule for, uh, this program. The fee schedule was put together in order for the program to be self-sustaining from a monetary point of view. And one of the reasons why they have the. Different fee based on when they're paid is that obviously it's going to take time to go back and rebuild people and call folk. The inspection. If there's questions and concerns about that, we can always go back and change that prior to, uh, the approval of the resolution for.
Uh, we would be. Here for the ordinance, adopt the ordinance, then adopt the resolution.
Will you do that?
At the.
Doug went to adopt the resolution.
This is well overdue and.
Yeah, we did have a program that, uh. Tony, uh. Riccardi did it for many years, uh, and it, well, it's funny because you look at the, the lower fee level, the schedule level, seventy-five dollars, I think we were fifty dollars for many years.
Thirty-five start.
Yeah, thirty-five and then it went to fifty, uh. But that's price well before COVID, I think, until that time we actually conducted the inspection program. We did meet with the, the fire marshal and the fire chief discussed this and they were all well on the word felt that really we needed to get back in the area.
The fire company need to know building safer and. Appropriated, right, it should cut down with the. False alarm call, the other, the nuisance call, the fire company is up dealing with volunteerism or it's that.
Well, and we also have some new facilities, larger facilities that have. Unique situations.
I know the fire company was ready to want to rent the apartments behind the wall on.
Right.
They couldn't find a knock box. There's, you know, it just wasn't set up the way it should be and it needs to, they need to be consistent wherever they're going.
Exactly.
Want to encourage them.
And so this, this is a, we all, commercial, um. Industrial type properties and multi residential units, apartment complexes, so it wouldn't be fourth town home. Single family homes, this would always be. And then multi unit, uh, residential.
Good. Thanks for getting it all together.
Thank you. Okay, and the next item on the agenda is, uh, Stephanie, that was here from. Man, a bone company. To discuss our, our debrief with, uh, D C E D. Over our, uh, recent application, which was not, uh, approved, but I think we got some. Good advice from the D C D folks about how we should approach this. What's it need to get?
Free of our call, um, I mean, that, but, um, so if you remember, we submitted two applications. One was the one for the relocation, uh, through the multimodal transportation fund program. And the second one was through the local share app. Stay tied for, uh, the one thirteen signal that was our. Um, so it took a year, almost a year, um, from the time we compared the application to their incisions. Uh, those were made a couple of weeks ago in March. Um, so we set up a meeting with the regional representative, Michael Shore. P C D just to get a debrief on those applications. Uh, before we went into each application, he wants to make sure. Uh, Joe, Doug and I on call had a understanding of how the C F A, um, finances and how it work. Uh, and so I'm just gonna tell you, uh, some of the things that they provide. Um, essentially the C F A, the ultimate decision maker on both M T F and L S A, there are some D C D grant programs that the C F A. However, they are involved in these programs. There's a five member voting. And reps from each party's caucus are in both the House and the Senate are voting. And as well as the rep from the governor's office. This is the key point. Projects need unanimous support from that five members voting. How they do that, if they go through individual project or if they go through a list of essentially agree to projects, they all would need unanimous. So that led him into this, um, discussing how we need, the legislators need to advocate for their projects. More in depth than even just providing letters of support for the application.
For a lot of program, the letter of support is, is.
Sufficiency.
Sufficiency.
But also required, right?
Yeah, correct. But.
Whether it's the county or.
Because the way this is funded through the C F A and because of the makeup of this paperwork, they. I mean, I don't think he could have stressed it.
Yeah.
We, we talked about some issues, but this really was the focus is that. You know, these applications need to be, you know, Tracy and Donna. Moving forward really need to be keyed in on the project to understand the project and to. You know, advocate on our behalf through the caucus, you know, both caucuses frankly, uh, or that. People understand the need and what this project is. So it gets to the ear basically of the C F A board and they, they need to have a, they need to hear from. The elected officials directly.
Now, I understand that there was, the, the, the amount of these requests from us were pretty much the entire budget they had to give out to everybody. So it was very, well, I'm not the whole bunch, but it was a very effective setting. So they, they gave. Uh, got very little money from Montgomery County, uh, in total of, of their entire budget. So, um. Basically, we're gonna get it no matter what we did.
Well, one of the, it differences with this program as opposed to others is they'll, they'll. Give partial.
Correct, correct.
So even if we don't get, even if we ask for three million dollars, you know, they may say, okay, we'll give you a million, um. That, that can happen with this as opposed to some of the other ones. They'll, they'll go through and say, okay, you know, you asked for this much, but we needed this much to, to spread it, to spread the funds out. Um, but really, I think, and, and I'm not. Putting anything on either of the elected officials on this because it kind of happened, the application was submitted prior to Donna coming on board and. Prior to Tracy being made a, and made a senator. So it was, it was, it was kind of in a little bit of an abyss.
Normally the M T F would have announced their typical handle in November. However, that was delayed to January, then that was. And I think because of the transition, uh, uh, you know, uh, some of the legislators in that period, they had a chance to go back. Revisit the project list, um, so, so M T F, just for, for the, M T F, the maximum grant amount is three million guidelines. We asked for three million, um, and L S A, uh, the maximum is a million. We, we did ask. Seven hundred three thousand. And we'll say after reviewing the list of awarded projects. Most of the time it's. Um, and it's really to get projects off the ground and started and then, you know, after it's come back year over year. Try to handle their funny differences, unless you have a project that is double ready. But if you go to construction, that's essentially the only time I've seen, uh, awards, you know, that they follow them. Um, the issue. So that, that being said, I think that was the first and foremost point that. Let's make sure that from the get-go. Um, there's the advocacy for the projects.
I think there's a few people who are willing to advocate for them. We just need to make sure we're educating them properly and right, pushing that way.
So a couple of specific things about each application, I, I will say they did say, um, he thought the applications were thorough, clean and had information they needed. But for example, the one thirteen relocation, he asked about private spreading, as I reiterated, it was really for engineering, so that is just. Sort of to get it going and that is the significant, um, size project, but you have to. Get it built first. Um, he asked if there was, um. The ability to provide any type of little fact that he said we would, um, talk to you about, um. If you recall, the program names, the match. Is, so you're not required to give a thirty percent match. Um, we did submit without a match because we've identified that the township adds funds for this project set aside. But to obligate those for that particular program and the match isn't, may not be the best move on the township's part because there are other programs. Where matches are not waiting and you need to apply those match codes to those programs. So for example, the recent application we made to the community projects through, um, or the team comes to the fees office. Requires a match, so I would be your matching funds to that necessary versus. You have program we asked the question.
Any indication that the match wasn't necessarily a deal breaker? He said it was. It might at a point, we'll say to your, your application, but it wasn't necessarily something that not having a match was going to be a detriment. So it's one of those things that. Yeah, so it, one of those things you just kind of have to. Look at the situation and say, is this gonna help us put this over the top? Or, you know, we want to make sure that we're keeping our powder dry, so to speak, and have the money available when we had, actually have an application. That's gonna require a match when we could have, you know. Not used it in this situation, which did, it doesn't require a match.
Um, so one question I need to have is that the M T F now is currently open again. Um, and we do the end of July, uh, obviously. There's a lot of work already done in the previous application. Just need to be carried forward, but the main question is whether or not, um, the township would, would want to number one, pursue that application again. And number two, would there be some match percentage that would. Consider for this application? He did say you certainly wouldn't have to go to the thirty percent match. Um, or not, but, um, that's, that's essentially at this point being. Um, getting. Um, getting. The process moving in, that is a project that you want to consider submitting again, uh, which is, like I said, to end of July. Um, that was really the, the reason for this discussion and. I thought with that, Jake Governor application.
I think if we were going to go that way and resubmit, then we probably want to have a meeting with. Uh, Representative Sharon and Senator Pennybrook, or their representatives to get them together. And have an understanding of a, a better understanding of the project than, you know, and I guess. Give them the indication that, you know, this, a little, a little more push than we've asked for in the past needs to happen.
Right, but do they know who, or do you know who the five members are on the C F A board, their names? Because that's what they're going to want to know, who do we have to talk to? And they'll go talk to.
Yeah, I'm sure we can get.
I'm sure.
Okay, so we need that, where's some due diligence?
Two, two from the Democratic Congress, two from the Republican Congress, and then the governors.
He did not share his specific name, as things certainly reach that gap.
Yeah.
I don't see a reason.
Yeah, I mean, I got the only question, who, who would imagine? You know, I said, well, what, are they going to look at ten percent as being adequate? He goes, listen. Just about any amount will tick the box. You know, obviously, though.
Do they take that account too, I mean, like for the, the. One thirteen relocation, one about the amount of right away that put a fire normally, does that?
We, we did describe all of that in the application, I think it's a matter of.
Well, I think that's where when discussed match, you know, right, I wouldn't have a problem with like ten percent match in, but I would also want to highlight the fact that. We've already taken the impetus.
Yeah.
To get, which is a big chunk of any, right, any project to, to be ready to go with this.
Right.
Unique project, though, and that wasn't, it's not like we're just buying strips of ground or things, I mean, that was a considerable. Uh, you know, effort.
We can do, certainly there's a funding commitment letter that's required, so whether you have to agree with a match or you identify those other items that are not. I think be a match in the application, but that has been. Uh, but worked towards that project, I think we can certainly make sure that that's. Written in the application, but it needs to be communicated, I think, together. On those.
Are we only allowed to turn in like one or two projects or could we put in as many as we want?
You can put in. Project readiness side of it that needs to be.
This one, yeah, I don't, he didn't, he didn't recommend putting in.
He did say.
I mean, we, we keep putting these in, it can get rejected for them, can we? Put other ones in that may be approved, that we might have on the list, that we might want done?
These are our highest priority.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah.
You're putting more than one, you think.
Right.
That you want to have funds because there's appropriations. Like, uh, so if you submit L S A and M T F. Producing funding, um. I would go back and say you're really competing against yourself when you put in multiple projects.
I feel that, that I think you started to say, Stu, we put in this for this last time, if we have a second opportunity, yes, in regards to matching, um. You know, you mentioned that, our solicitor Andy said he didn't see that that was a big difference of.
For. First, we spoke with that D C. D, I said, well, you know, okay, we, we say we're going to put in a match, what's that going to do for us in the process? And he basically said, you know. Lack of another term, he goes, oh, it might add a point. Then it wasn't going to be something that's going to like, oh, boy, these guys put a match in, so we're going to. He said, yeah, I mean, if we can get, you know, if it was, you know. We were even with somebody else and we put a match and they didn't, maybe that would help us, but I don't know that that's. He, he didn't, he, he, the impression I got was that a match is nice, but.
You know, it was the, it's the. It's a political process.
Yeah.
It's a political process that we.
That operating of that far and away, he said.
Yes. For how the benefit. President's.
Right.
Have the right people pushing the right people.
They were, but yet he did say he anticipates that, uh, maybe just that here later on summer. Here, just because we're following the application. That's the real time the state of the L S A was. Um, ministered, so we have a little more time on that one, but I will say that one does not have a match. Um, he said there's no criteria for the L S A for match. Going down the checklist, match is not one of them. Whereas on the M T F, Matt is one.
I think I'll go with. He's saying, too, which is a little due diligence, and I think it's worth a meeting with Donna and Tracy. And explain what you heard, explain what the application is, get their feedback on the strategic reading, it's a bad word. But the strategy of how do we best positions and get them a hundred percent bought in, and then position it that way.
And get them a set of talking points so that when they have the caucus in front of them, it's, you know, an elevator speech, this is the project, this is the benefit, this is why we need you on board.
We already have three million dollars worth of right away, we already have whatever those numbers are so that it isn't though, we're not doing a match now. We've got this teed up, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm in favor moving forward.
Sounds good, me too, anybody not in favor?
I would come back and revisit the L S A and the back program, even again, because I do think there are some opportunities, if the funding is important for that. Pays.
I have to run a few things. Okay, real quick, though, um, there was at, at Doug's, um, retirement gala. Uh, the discussion of putting a bench at, um, the golf course was discussed, um. Some of the folks on the Recreation Authority had some additional ideas and thought, rather than a, than a bench, um. A clock. Like the one we have out front here, not necessarily that big, I did put some information that everybody's, basically is considerably, um, more expensive, um.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
We have the price in front of this, maybe talk about this tomorrow evening after, at the end of the meeting?
Sure.
I don't know.
I will not be sure.
Oh, you're not going to be.
Oh, girl.
Nice. Did you want to talk about now, I mean?
Well, I mean, now that we've got the pricing, let's, I guess, table it.
It's illuminated.
Yeah, I mean. We'll talk about it maybe. It's not tomorrow night.
Okay.
There's no urgency for that.
No, no, no.
No.
Okay. One, one thing, uh, I just, I don't know.
No, that's fine.
Just a conversation, something I thought of, and we were talking about putting up, obviously, we have cameras now. Um, I don't know the process that would be involved, but I'd be more look into it and all that, maybe grants available for the, what is the possibility of possibly having wifi? For the public, uh, if we have access to electricity, you know, getting some kind of service in there, it could be something that we could look into, talking to providers, see what. Grants might be available, but I know that we're in a pandemic, there's a lot of discussion, and people have said that they, you know, came up with a demo, that it's all that, just to use the wifi. Might be nice to have it out there if it's something that.
We feel that, of course, the school district, because they were. Oh, yeah, some people within the district who didn't have.
Right.
Uh, where we're all having fun by a home, and we opened ours up so people could park in the parking lot. Next to our one.
I know, I know that people did that, but I think, uh, just the idea is something I didn't think of, but we were talking about how we have a cellular, you know, and. Into that, that's a possibility, I don't know what it would entail, but.
That's a great idea.
I, it's a good idea. Great. Joe?
No.
All right. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
We need that. Motion to adjourn. See you tomorrow night.
You're early.
Early tomorrow night?
Oh, yeah.